Welcome to E-merge Podcast 360. I'm your host, Maserati. We want to thank you for tuning in. No matter where you are in this metaverse world, we're going to continue to bring you the best quality content and formula that we know how. We want to thank you for all the likes, shares and subscriptions on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter and YouTube thus far. We got a great show for you tonight. Once again, we want to thank you wherever you are. We as promised, it's going to be lit, as the young folks say, we have an exclusive interview for you tonight. This is being brought to you by Involve Socia and Civic Club, where we understand the social civic need of love, learn, live and laugh. And by Brichelle Family Insurance Agency and Xavier the X-Man Robinson. As promised, we have exclusive interview and we're going to go into the community garden and visit one of our own elected officials and former International Paper Mill employee. Born October 1955 in Baskerville, Louisiana, he's a graduate of Baskerville High School in 1973. He attended UL, NLU then, now ULM in 73 and 75. His employment International Paper Mill 1975 to 2008, where he retired. He was a stock rep operator and a union rep, local rep number 272. He was a former Morehouse Parish School Board member from 2011 to 2014 for District Number 7. Where he stood on who will stand for the children was his motto. He's also a certified sports official after he retired for LHSAA, LHSOA, MAIAS and USSA. His recent employment is in Sierra Vista, Arizona, where he was employed with the Sierra Vista School System. Now he's enjoying retirement in Gilbert, Arizona, married to Ms. Mae Edna Fensroy of five children. He's a proud papa, grandfather and great-grandfather. It's none other than one of our own sponsors of the podcast, Mr. Robert Fensroy, former Morehouse Parish School Board Member himself. Brother Squeeze, how you doing today, brother?
Oh, everything lovely. Glad to hear from you, Maserati. But as we, we know your ass, AKA number one, Mr. Revolutionary himself. I'm gonna get you around and some shouts out.
Right, 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 already.
So keep doing what you're doing, brother.
Already, 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 brother Fensroy, man. It's great to hear your voice. I wanted to hear the ins and the outs from the one that showed me the ropes through officiating, the size of politics that I'd never really took interest in until I came across you, bro. And you one of those mentors that I had to end season one with one of the best. Squeeze, kind of share with the people about the background of Robert Earl Fensroy, one of the most known and profound activists for Morehouse Parish and surrounding areas.
Yes, sir. Just appreciate it. Like you stated earlier, the year 1955, we was right in there called baby booms. So as we processed through civil rights, and I want to say I was about seven or eight, I seen some things that, you know, most young people today wouldn't even speak on it or even know what was going on. But I was able to witness that with my parents and other ones that was in the community from, where we grew up on Jackson Street and then moved to Short Turkey, a street off of, as we say, the Straight Street family. So from that point on, all the way till being one of the first line integrators that, we was the last junior high class at the Morehouse then, at the house, as we would say. And my sister, Melba, who passed in 2018, she was the last graduating class of the house. And we just called her Peewee, which I kind of think back on her and your mothers, Sister Lette. They was pretty close. Always. Every time I see Lette, I think about Peewee. But from that point on, as we progressed to junior high to high school, and like I said, graduating in 73, it was some interesting time, because a lot of people don't know right now, I don't use the N-word, brother. When they call you a nigger, that's what they meant to say. So quit using the N-word. And on my birth certificate, that John Walker Fensroy Senior and Bunny Fensroy put on my certificate, you just named it. It was Robert Earl Fensroy. It wasn't no nigger. So we need to bag up off that turn, hollering the N-word, or don't use the word at all. Because they know it's derogatory when they use it. And a lot of people don't know this point either, brother. During that time, I was graduating year, it was the worst ride over at Baskerville High School because of that one word. You got tired of listening to it. It shouldn't have happened, but some folks don't get the understanding of a peer communication. As Almighty say, Amos 3:3, how can two walk unless they be in agreement? If you and I can't be in agreement, something wrong with the whole picture that we roll and trying to make it equal. But you want to be separated, you can't be separated. Because we infiltrate with each other every day of our lives. And I'm thankful to God that I learned, that I learned and was able to establish myself. Some people at the mill, they love it, but hey, I had to deal with them, they had to deal with me. And most of those individuals, like I say, he graduated with me in 73, or came before, or came after me. But they understanding the proximity of graduation. And we all need to understand that when we say education, it's about making you be able to think for yourself. And God put a spirit in you to know right from wrong. So the bottom line is, as we grew from point A to all the way to point B, we know right from wrong. So yeah, that was my motto when I was established running for the school board, who would stand for the children. We still in that crisis right today.
Right, and I'm just listening to you, brother Squeeze. So you came readily, right in at the integration and you could pretty much cut the racism, the prejudice, whatever we want to classify it as, but you could cut it with a knife, it was just that thick around here when you was coming up as a young man?
Exactly. I mean, even to the point that our parents, your grandfather, Boo and Breffel, we calling the shoemaker. Everybody knows who the shoemaker was, but at the same time, like I say, he paying taxes, my parents paying taxes, and then somebody, we walking up the street on Jackson going north, some little old European fee bayer wanted to stand out there and tell us not to walk on her sidewalk. Well, heck, woman, you ain't bought no sidewalk. Sidewalk belongs to everybody. And then if you didn't do what they think you supposed to do, now they want to call law enforcement. Man, if you don't know who I look like, you wasting your time calling law enforcement to do what? Because we in Jim Crow. But like I say, you want my parents to pay their taxes, we walking up the street and some individual going to tell us we need to get off the sidewalk. I mean, it was a lot of things we seen. Now that was just on, as we divide on Madison North and South, I know Lette and them seen a lot of stuff exactly like we seen in your Uncle Charles. So yeah, it stands to reason, but we were small enough not, you know, to get to the point of intimidating peoples. What we learned a lot as we grew older, what we should be doing on our civil rights. And like I say, everything started changing between the 1965 all the way to the 70s.
Right, right. You know, and Squeeze, and that's what I brought you on for. And if people don't know, I know you, I know that you speak from your heart, you speak from a good place, but you're advocate and you're going to stand on what you stand on and that's what I love about you. And I know you was going to give it to us straight from the hip. But we're going to take an intermission and we come back, we want to speak more on the demographic of how it was you coming up here in Morehouse Parish, on to you going on and working at the paper mill and throughout your political career after we take this short intermission. We'll be back with Morehouse Parish, former school board member and one everybody love, Old Squeeze, Mr. Robert Earl Fensroy, after we take this short intermission. Welcome back, welcome back. This portion of the show is being brought to you by Steppenstone's LLC of Jonesboro, Louisiana, and Patrick Stewart LLC. Shout out to Putt Putt. We're still here with former Morehouse Parish School Board Member, the one that everybody know as Old Squeeze, the one we love the most, Mr. Robert Earl Fensroy. Squeeze, when we left, you was kind of sharing with us how it was that you growing up here in Scripps City and we're getting the demographic of showing the people how far we have come as a city. And we're going to end this thing and showing them how we can become better. But share with us how it was in the demographics of these lines that were drawn for you guys as you was young children going into high school, heading into your younger adult ages.
Yes, sir. Like I say, when we integrated our ninth grade year, they considered Morehouse, Morehouse Junior High West. And then over there on South Washington, they consider that building of Morehouse Junior High East, which the girls, we were separated, girls went to East, we went to the West. But everybody, when they got to our 10th grade, we was all at the high school. Now, it don't take no eye sign to figure out what was going on. But see, thanks be to God for Ms. Annie Mae Piper Andrews had informed those individuals of all colors, look, this was not rational for our kids to be separated like that. Because we have to intertwine males and females. Now for her just to speak power to the truth, then somebody finally realized, oh, that makes sense. Well, yeah, it made sense in the beginning, because we knew everybody from elementary to eighth grade that looked like us, male and female, we just didn't know the European, male and female. But as we processed for those year two at Morehouse West, where we was intertwined with the males over there and they was intertwined with us. And they had a lot of ignorant rules that I didn't think applied, just like they had a smoking ring. Really? Junior high? But see, we talking about the lines on how our culture was, you know, our people didn't play that, you smoking. You got caught, everybody hooked you. But here you is and set up a smoking ring at this junior high, they're supposed to be seven, eight, ninth grade, I believe. And you just, you done decided, okay, well, this is what we want our kids to do. No, our parents didn't want us doing that, but some, you know, intertwined in and start smoking. Because everybody know, every class had someone that was a little older that shouldn't even been in the class. But that's the way, and president is the same thing. So as we processed, it got better because Ms. Andrews made a point, you can't keep the generations or the genders separated. Now, like I say, I won't get too deep into it, but it definitely, it was mind-boggling, but we had already figured out what was going on. And everybody know their own kids, whether male or female, African-American or European-American. And that's what it was pretty well based on, even at when you got to the high school, well, what sense that make? We're going to be at the high school together. We're going to play in the band together. We had basketball games together, football games together, you know, baseball and softball. And like I say, specialty band, pretty much everybody was in the band together. So yeah, so yeah, so with her making that point, then somebody had to realize, well, that was valid. Because you surely did it in the first place. And we know, we all know how kids are, but it was just certain things we wasn't trying. So not trying to lead anything to imagination, but like I say, people, everybody know their kids. And you can throw out the color, because it's male and females and it's just going to be what it's going to be. So that's how, that's how that policy got changed, which they eventually ended up closing the other school, because it wasn't up to code, structure-wise for anybody to be in their school. So they converted it to pretty much to, at that time, using it for the part of the administration building.
Right. So you know, we understand, you know, the demographics of how Baskerville, what we know as Scripps City once was at one time, and like you say, as you grew and you transitioned, things change where a young man like yourself could get into the International Paper Mill. Kind of share with us about how the politics played affect and you being a union rep member in the International Paper Mill.
Yes. So even to the point when I left ULM and started working at the mill, well, your last name stands for always or something. So it wasn't like it was a lot of Fensroy, I was with my father, worked for International. And at that time, mother was driving the bus for Morehouse Parish School System. So it was a perfect fit either way. But I was fortunate enough to work for International as a young man coming up through the ranks, pretty much working all the departments before I was settling in at Stock Prep. And at that time, as thing was progressing, as you say, here come the right to work law. And everybody remember Dave Again, he was one of them that pushed the right to work law and had a business right in Morehouse Parish. Well, you know, we, we unionized, that didn't sit well with one hour homeboys pushing a book issue like that, right to work? And all companies, it could be your company, my company, you going to look out for your dollar. And you paying people's a pretty good salary, hourly wage at that time. But you going to intervene with right to work? Because you trying to bust up the union? No, that wasn't even feasible. Because now you going to go back to the old way of somebody get hurt, well, oh, well, and you're not going to take care of that individual. But we made it through that. Now, the union was still strong because we had several other mills that was in that same craft that we all voted together. If one voted to strike, we all struck. If it came down to that, but we were still negotiating for better wages, better working conditions, because there's always safety first, even at the house too, when you get involved with the federal government. Safety always first. You know, right now, they don't apply it as much, but it should be. Even to your retirement, wages, you trying to have wages where they going to be equal to, you just not being in a hole because inflation eating up everything that you are making. You don't, nobody want a negative fund balance at the house, man. And you working a good job, getting paid, should be the top paid for your craft. And then we was a specialty mill at that time, Louisiana Mill, with maybe one or two more. But we was the top specialty grade mill, making all colors of the rainbow. And we had a saying around the mill, well, it must be the bayou water, because that's where we was receiving water from. Which was pumped until the reservoir there busted break, which was then pumped until the bayou. And we had bayou pumps that brought water to the, to the mill. So it was an interesting perspective, but that was a little joke around the mill that the, it must be the water that we was using to make a better grade of paper.
Well, I guess, Squeeze, what we want to know from someone that was actually in there, that had 33 years. I mean, you know, you there was from the, you know, set over 33 years to, you know, they demolished it pretty much. What was the exact lead and last scrawl that broke the camel back when International said, we're done with Baskerville?
Yeah, well, as we processing through the years, they closed the old mill, that was part of. And then the single service, they moved it out with your father worked there at the time, Mr. Joe Odom. So a lot of them transferred over to International Paper. So as the years are processing, remember now, I'm a young man in my twenties. And when I left there, I'm about to be in my fifties, but we moving up through the ranks. Everything is young, it's coming up. And color has nothing to do with it, because if you entry level and then start moving up, progressing on your job, well, you should be the one on the job and not like you say, politics and favoritism. But it started rumbling in, okay, like I say, 2008 December is closed, but prior to that, two or three years, it was already started rumbling on they was going to shut the mill down based on various rumors, but I'm not going to repeat none of those. But eventually, we could see it coming. Because they was making the process, which should have been getting easier and simpler. Heck, man, they was trying to make it harder. Even start cutting back on staffing all the way through the mill. All, you kept your staff, but you start picking up, you might have been expert on one job, but then you start picking up maybe two or three other jobs to go along with the one job you was doing. So if you pick up two or three other jobs in your line, well, you feel like you ought to get an extra dollar from 50 cent to $1 extra. In negotiation, they didn't want to hear none of that. Now, I'm giving you the facts as they were. Now, if anybody else say anything different, well, they saw it differently than what I saw it. And I'm, and I'm just speaking for preference, because I represented, we was stock preparation and I represented that department, which we was considered the head of the operation when it came to making the paper, because we had to put all the ingredients in it, just like you making a cake. And we added the dye, the starch, water, clay, whatever, whatever we need to put in to this stock to make that sheet of paper, we was the controlling head. Now, when it, when it went out the door, where your father worked at it finishing and shipping, that's where it went out of it. That was the finished product. But it started with us on the south end of the paper mill.
Right. And I, I, what, I guess we want to know this too, Squeeze. What could have been done to save it? I hear you talking about negotiations, we know the union in favor, trying to be for employees, but then some of the employees not in part of the union. What, what could have been done that you feel to save the mill?
Well, once again, it was more on some, most of upper management, not necessarily at the paper mill. Personal or political, they got involved because they didn't like the way thing was going at Louisiana Mill. And a lot of them that came through there, when they left and went out to other mills, I went to, at the time, the administration was up in Memphis, which I think they still have some up there. They just took a hard, hard look at Louisiana Mill and they just didn't like it. Now, demographic part, if you go from east to west, we were sitting in the middle of the nation to trains that were shipping the papers out all by rail or either by road transportation. Then all the way to the west coast, because it was international zone of west coast. But we was, we was the number one league specialty grade of all the mills. But like I say, politics and somebody having personal views, you know, caused this, this mill to just get terminated. Plus, we was one of the older mills too, it wasn't, they was working on things to get technical. You know, bringing it up to using more instrumentation and AI, but it was just a whole mill. And that was pretty much some of the downfall to it. But anything they brought in that the other mills couldn't apply and run, we could do it. And they knew that. But eventually, it was just on the chopping block. And we talking about economics now, because you're not going to keep something running that's not benefiting you per se. And that was, that was one of the, one of the biggest conversations. But at the same time, if you can't show a profit, they didn't want to hear it, bro. And we were showing the profit, but they still didn't want to hear it.
So, so a lot of politics that, that you say probably was beyond the immediate administration there at the mill. People outside of just regular employees were delegating over this mill, we would say the powers that be that run the city at the time. And it was kind of back and forth thing, I'm trying to get from you with International Paper, what they will and will not do for the city of Baskerville. And someone decide to say, tell International, well, you can take it and go?
Well, it wasn't so much on the city part, because the ones that work in administration at the Louisiana mills, they was more inclined with the city, helping the city out. But as it processed outside of Morehouse Parish, outside of the city of Louisiana, that's what the problem was like. That's what the politic and the personal feelings came in to a lot of them, like I say, that had came to International, to Louisiana Mill, found out that people's wasn't in line to, you just saying, well, you need to go this, well, you need to give them a specific reason that I need to go do that. So when them individuals start coming in and testing their authority at Louisiana Mill and then going other places, like I say, might end up at the corporate office up in Memphis. He just took a hard feeling on whatever taste was in their mouth when they left Louisiana Mill. Yeah, like I say, with the city, it was fine, because the city was, you know, exactly, they supposed to get their taxes and property taxes from whatever business is in the community or in the parish of Morehouse Parish, all the way to the city of Baskerville. And that was fine, because that's no more than right. But you can't come in and try to, like I say, as we say, corporate, all business type, they want to come in and pretty much specialty if they brand new, they want to pimp, pimp that city. Well, you just can't come in and pimp the city and then they don't garnish none of the stuff they supposed to be getting for taxes after X amount of years. Well, we got a problem. But I'm just speaking in general. And that, because like I said, Louisiana Mill, the taxes was being taken care of. But now I'm just speaking on someone's personal or political avenue. They just took a disdain to most of the employees in Morehouse Parish at Louisiana Mill. That's a fact.
Right. You know, and now we have a better understanding, you know, people, you know, be a rumors, like you say, it was this administration and this person did that, these people did that. And now we get a better understanding, it was just, it was, it was out for Baskerville. It was on the chopping block, it wasn't no negotiation and it pretty much, we was doomed, whether we was thriving. And it pretty much, we was doomed, whether we was a, a thriving, uh, city or not. We was pretty much doomed from what I'm getting from you.
Yeah, like I say, the, the city of Baskerville government had nothing to do with it. It was strictly international paper company. Whatever they could, I'll give you a prime example, Mississippi. Vicusburg Mills and one or two other over there. Whatever they couldn't run at the Vicusburg Mill, they would bring it to Louisiana Mill. And we ran it. And, and it was well satisfied with. Even to the point that we, they brought in a couple of machines to do, uh, running recycled paper, just to send it out to other other mills that ran that recycled stock. We did pretty good on that. Now, I'm telling you how they innovated new machinery, the same machinery I'm talking about, Mr. Joe Oldham can give you confirmation on it. And me being a junior man, I had the ability to walk around from point A, my position to point B, C, D, E, F, and G. As long as I had my radio, if I received a call to come back and take care of my duties. But I watched a lot of that unfold. And, and individuals even asked me, well, oh, here you come. Yeah, I'm coming, I'm coming to, to look and see what's going on. Because like I say, you can't hide the truth. It's, it's coming out eventually. Even, even they built a brand new boiler. And everybody seen that boiler when it went up and everybody seen it when it came down. I mean, you want, you, you got a situation running energy that even to the point of generating energy, why not leave those two or three boilers and generate energy that you could have sold back to Louisiana Power and Gas? And a lot of people know that was discussed, cause we had a, a connection sitting right there at my department that connected to the, uh, Louisiana Power and Light. So yeah, so yeah, between zero years and thirty-three years, yeah, I learned a lot. And there's a lot of other people that worked at that plant. I have information too. But like I say, being a, a union man, I was able to see a little bit more. And it wasn't no secret, if I told you, you can just about say, yeah, that's probably the truth. I was like, what I had, what I got to have? I had nothing to have. I had no gain in, in this venture. I was just blessed to have, uh, get a job at that time in the early seventies to all the way two thousand eight.
Right, and you know, squeeze, we gonna, uh, take another intermission. But when we come back, we, we, we wanna go into what we let you go about. Some of the problem now, you know, with the mill leaving and how the school board system is, we want you to take us back to when you were standing on, who was standing with the kids as your motto, to what kind of you seen start unravel, just like with the mill with the Morehouse Parish School Board, when we come back after this short intermission. When we return, we're still here with Robert Earl Finchroy, old squeeze, former Morehouse Parish School Board member, thirty-three years international paper mill. When we return after this intermission.
Immersed three sixty podcast focuses on uplifting rural and urban areas and dire conditions with no solutions by shedding light on pioneers, athletes, and political figures who have made an impression on northeast Louisiana and surrounding areas. Immersed understands the social and civic needs to love, learn, live, and laugh. So tap in every Sunday and Wednesday at eight PM on all social networks and platforms. Always remember, immersed three sixty.
Welcome back, welcome back. This portion of the show is being brought to you by Northeast Louisiana Counseling LLC. And we're shouting out to my brother, Reginald Locke, for his support in the Locke family reunion. We're still here with former Morehouse Parish School Board member and thirty-three years employee and union rep for International Paper Mill, formerly International Paper Mill of Morehouse Parish, Baskerville, Louisiana. Brother Finchroy, uh, you went on to, um, be a political figure. And you end up running for school board. Kind of share with the people about your motto, who was staying for the kids and what you seen unraveling then uh, leading up to now, what you know what's going on now?
Yes, well, that motto was for everyone. But it had a significant with me because of the condition that was going on at the time. And he don't like to be called OJ, but that's, that's what we stuck him with. Oscar James Finchroy, he named for two uncles. My father's brother, Oscar, and my mother's brother, James. And I guess y'all know, we just say OJ. And as time progressed, some people kind of took a hard pill towards them wearing the hair braided when they was in junior high. Which was fine. But when they hit high school, we got certain individuals sitting in the administration over at the high school, they took offense to it. But all this preceded when him and his other classmates was at all elementary schools, they had their own little basketball team at each elementary school, which I coached. Uh, Westside, where they was going to school, gold figure from should have been going to H V Adam, but we was going way to Westside from Shady Oak Street. Which I had no problem with that. And it was all about the numbers, you know, trying to make all numbers equal out at all the elementary schools that we had inside of the city. And Miss Laura Wallace was the principal at that time. So at the time, at the high school, we had, uh, Coach Alex Perkins. And he was running a little program, then before then, you know, we had Bob Curly. So when Curly left and Coach Perkins came in, he, he started the program over. And OJ number was doing pretty good, so he, he lacked how he handled the ball. So that was one of the incentives. He wanted him to be one of his ball boys. Now, like I say, you, you can't, you think you can put something over on me when I'm watching all my days, how this, this basketball and trended in Morehouse Parish? When I was in high school with Coach Vine and Stockton and Baltimore then was over at the high school, I watched all that unfold. I watched who was, who was the ball boys. Somebody in elementary. One or two weren't even in, in Morehouse Parish. I didn't have no problem with it, but I watched it unfold. But the minute my son wearing his braids and sitting on this bench, learning Coach Perkins, how he run his program, that was the benefit to kids that from, from elementary to junior high to high school. Cause Perkins see what he got coming up. Now, when he sat there on the bench, like I say, once again, this politic. And if they took it personal, that was on them. It wasn't on Robert Finchroy. Cause if I get personal with you, you're not gonna like it. Thanks be to God. So I told this individual, man, look, if you got a problem with him wearing his braids and he just in elementary school, the problem ain't ours, the problem is yours. So to get around it, you know, he gonna go talk to, uh, Coach Perkins about it. And as we processed through this thing, I'm telling Coach Perkins, coach, I understand that. But you from Sinla, this northeast Louisiana. And I deal with these clowns every day, on a daily basis, even to where I work at. But when they, they figure out that they need something for the kids, and I'm talking about all kids now of all colors. I didn't have no problem contributing, cause they wasn't them a kid. Cause I'm trying to show these other people a, a different perspective. See, so, so don't take it personal when I ask you a question about my son and you can't give me an answer. You wanna go get, uh, some other individual that looking like me to come talk to me? No, that don't work. I respect them too, cause most of them was my older brother, John Junior, Vietnam Vet classmates. And that's where I left it at. Cause we all understand back in the day when the older siblings had to take care of the younger. Man, I'm the baby of five and God blessed me to see sixty-seven. So you think I'm gonna sit around here and play with somebody about my kids now? My grandkids now and my great-grand? No, they got this thing confused. So as it processed, he makes it to, to high school, all of a sudden it's still a problem. So we took it upon ourselves, we gonna go to a school board member. My school board member at the time in District Seven. And me and her discussed it. Well, she was the first one to integrate down that northeast at the time, along with my cousin, Virginia Cal Williams at the time, before she married, uh, Newton. And that's when I tell people, you need to be cognizant of what the understanding is. Cause once again, Cardi G Woodson, miseducation of a Negro. They don't want you to have a education, cause it, at the end of his book, he said this one true thing. Education helps you to think. And they didn't want Negroes thinking. That's what his book was all about. And some people need to pick that up. But as we progressed through high school, with this same foolishness, no, this ain't gonna work. I can, I can show you better than I can tell you. I went before the board every time they opened the door on this issue. Before they finally straightened it out. We got three black board members and four of them Europeans sitting up there looking crazy. And one of them was worked at the mill in administration. And his, his dad and his uncle worked in the, in the paper mill with me. So it ain't like none of us was strangers or them seven individuals sit on the board. And at that time, that individual that used to be principal, he now superintendent. So finally, my board members convinced them what they need to do. Which I did eventually run against her before she last time around decided not to run. Which I didn't have no problem with it. Cause like I say, everything that God wanted me to see, brother, Maza Roddy, AKA Revolutionary, I was able to see it. And I watched a lot of stuff unfold and a lot of stuff, them same board members that was sitting there before my son would tell me stuff that would had happened to their own kids. At the time, that little short individual that was principal over at the high school. Now, I'm, I'm gonna make this point that everybody can hear this. I stand six feet, at the time, one-six-five and one-seven, and I was in pretty good shape. And I told that same individual, I seen his neck right in between my forearm, and the only thing saving me from doing that was God. And I meant that. And he looked at me, what you say? What you say, Mr. Finchroy? I said, you heard me. But then you wanna turn around the same breath and tell me, well, we gotta help these kids out, cause they don't have no hope. Man, I just, I, I just sat out, I flopped down where I was standing. I said, I know that didn't come out that rat's mouth. Cause they always got a constitutional understanding to think we kind of slow in the head and they can say stuff to make us feel bad. No, that stuff don't work with me, bro. And I was serious about that for all kids. Like I say, every child that's running through Morehouse Parish right now, all of them, not Finchroy, most of them on my mother's side are Williams, out of Oak Ridge. Now, I'm gonna let other folks figure that one out. But yeah, that, that, that's how that, that foolishness got started, had been going on with the previous three board members that looked like me. One male, one female. And I could call their names, but folks can go looking up for themselves. They already know who they are. One representative from down there in uh, East Parish with her small self. Then my board member in District Seven. And then other board member here in District, District Six at the time, used to be a principal, male. Pushed for it and got on the seat. Like I say, you tell me things and y'all forget how they did you all's kids over there. But I wasn't playing that, cause I, I don't have to be in good gracing with you. I need to be in good gracing with my kids and the almighty, cause at the end of the day, James say to him, they know to do good and do it not, to him, that's sin. I'm gonna let you mistreat my child and he got to look at me? No, I'm gonna put it on the ones that started this foolishness. And they sat there dropping their heads, wouldn't give him answers, thought we was gonna just quit? No, that wasn't happening. Now, eventually, when I got on the seat for them four years, the same thing was applying. You gonna tell me about the kids on the North for the Bayou with all they need? With these, what was it, six elementary schools, one junior high inside and one high school? And these kids, which were predominantly black, can't get what they need? And then Delta at the time still had their own, uh, tax base. That's how Beetman got their tax base, based off of Delta. Because of the Kennedy Rice Farm and all those farmers down there that had the business. Now, back to International Paper Company. They knew if they'd have let that, them buildings sit there, they had to pay more taxes on the building. So what did they do? That, that's just like any structure that you have on your land. As long as that structure's there, they gonna charge you for it. So eventually, International brought the mill all the way down to the day.
And, and, and I guess, and I, I guess, uh, squeeze, that, that's where we at now. It, it, it's still a blame on the mill, but you done cleared that up, that it, that mill was gonna leave regardless. What exactly unraveled, you know, your four years on there? I know you, you was pushing hard and you had some battles. What was the unraveling? Why did we start exactly closing these schools down?
The premise of it was talking about the money. We had it. The money was already there. You just circumventing money to the wrong places. We kept getting top heavy down there that when they moved out there on Nell Street, which was a nice location. Cause it had what used to be a Vernon Solid Trucking System right there. They had every setup that you need based on working on the buses, trucks. Whatever you need to work on, it was right there. Perfect pitch. No problem. But when it came to all the schools, once again, administration at that building, you're top heavy. You're spending too much money in administration when you should have been taking care of your your teachers, support peoples. You gonna get federal and tax money for your kids anyway. And state based on pupil population for one individual child. Then you gonna get additional money for all special need kids. Now, if they say OJ coming to school, he jumping off the, off the chain, Mr. Finchroy, y'all need to put such and such, he ADHD. When the parents mess up it, sometime you need to check them folks you talking to, cause it's all about a dollar for them. Now, like I say, we was blessed. I'm not finna put my child on no medicine. I need to do better than what I'm doing as a parent. And I hope whoever listen to me understand where I'm coming from. Cause I dealt with it all, leave them four years I sat there. They tried to hide a lot of stuff from me. They couldn't, cause the parents had called me. I asked them, okay, well, what district you delivering? They're telling me, okay, well, we gonna take this conversation, well, we gonna take this conversation to District Two, one through seven. If you was in my district, District Seven, that was fine, but if you was in the mother fire district, I'm gonna get that board member involved. Cause that, that's what they got hired for. And if they don't, we might have a friendly conversation or we might just have a conversation right there in a board meeting. Cause I'm in the business, you talking about transparent, I'm, I'm gonna expose myself too. And do, did I do everything right? No, I didn't. But once again, you top heavy at that central office. You paying peoples too much, just, I wouldn't say freeloadin', cause they got educated. They made it all the way to the top, that's fine. But at a certain point in time, brother, biblically, it talks about us elders being what? For counseling. You young peoples for worrying. A lot of them in that, that central office need to be gone. And once again, I ain't calling no name. But right now, the one that sit over there shooting the foul in transportation, man, you wearing too many hats. You and several more. And when it come up that foolishness about them cell phone, before you create a problem, stop before it gets started. Now, once again, back to this property tax thing, that was part of the issue too. We generating funds from International, but you paying too much money to these peoples that's sitting over here with all these years. Then we came up with a plan, okay, if somebody had to take our seat, whoever over here in this central office, it was part of that curriculum, whether it's English, bad sign. You know, you ought to be able to go to that class and teach it, cause y'all already getting paid. They agreed to it. But like I say, we not part of the day-to-day operation, we just got one employee, that was the superintendent. But like I say, I, I rather them all. Now, like I say, when International left, told the building down, now they just paying money, you know, city government and school government and if parish is any, can't remember, it's very little now. But I know we had the funds, but we just top-heavy in this central office. And when you have real current expenses, just like with the city government and parish government, you paying employees. They got a salary, and then you got a related benefit to their retirement. And that's what eat up all your, your fund balance, Lee, the retirement. And some of them was getting pretty good, you know, up in yields, and then retirement coming too.
Wow.
So eventually, here we go with schools shutting down. I'm taking a little flack about certain schools. But I'mma tell people, whoever listening, y'all understand Robert Finswell plainly. It was Morehouse Parish, Carver, which was the first one to go, and H V Adam, Dove was our school. We was too crowded at, at Morehouse, which had a two white building for junior high. The little building over to the, which is, the cafeteria is sitting in the center now, and if you come west, that was elementary. And everything up front was the, was the high school. That's all we had for all the black population in the city of Bass. And whoever was down the Collison Road, the other little extension, Pear, Pearville, down four twenty-five or one thirty-nine. They was coming to Morehouse High School, junior high and elementary, before they built H V Adam and Carver. Now, they had, like I say, South Side doing well. Uh, West Side, which was right there by the high school. I meant to say East Side, cause that's where OJ never was going. And whatever other school, Pine Grove and Cherry Ridge Elementary, Pine Grove was out in the parish. But Cherry Ridge. So yeah, a lot of folks took offense, well, why are you close? Man, I wasn't worried about them. And the other school that was on Collison Road, right across from, uh, Carver at the time. So we didn't have but Morehouse, H V Adam, and Carver. And when the shutting down got started, Carver was the first one. H V Adam and Carver was the last two schools that was built, modernized. But since it was to us, Black American, okay, your school board members, that's wanting to be the first one you want to shut down. But like I say, you take offense with me, talking about, well, if y'all wanna shut South Side down, it's fine with me. They missed the whole point. You gotta look at the whole, whole picture. Cause it was all about the kids. I'm trying to get them in a comfort zone where they be in a proper perspective to educate themselves to where they can be sufficient and efficient to what they doing, not for someone else. Using you for a paycheck. So that's how that thing got started. And thanks be to God, to my cousin Randall William and his wife, the Robertson. Now Carver is a what? It's being used at a community center. So, so things still progressing in Bass, people just need to pay attention to what they relying on and who they listening to, and do fact finding for yourself. Cause like I say, I was open book. I, I tell you today the same thing I tell you tomorrow. You could ask me about any of them board members, I'll tell you the same thing I tell you today. We all find peoples till we get put under pressure. But I, I never, I never rest that limit. Had one of my old classmates call one board member, he called me. Told me some stuff the fellow said, cause my great nephew, no playing up there at Beatman, he was coaching at the time. Now, like I say, one of my old classmates, European. And the guy asked me, Robert, I just wanna know, uh, Coach told me this here. I went to laughing. I said, man, I said, God, I always got witnesses to whatever I say to somebody. I said, one of my former players from Delta, he was standing right there, cause his brother was on the team along with mine hefty. And when that fellow said what he said to me, I told him, man, you don't know this fellow. Me and him was in school together. And we supposed to be way past that now, cause we, we, we supposed to be, hell, we past twenty-five, we know better. But you can't make a, a, a statement like that about me and make it be racist, and I didn't say it. And the gentleman that was standing there, one of my former players down at, at Delta. I told him, I said, you know this man? He said, yeah, he worked up there, up there where he live in Moneeda. I said, well, ask him, he'll tell you. I said, now, I'm through with it. I said, but I tell you what, whenever I see that fellow again, I'mma, I'mma inform him. I didn't appreciate what he said to you. Cause I don't roll like that. Anybody at that mill, they'll tell you quick. If he say it, that's what he meant. So don't cause me with no foolishness, talking about a, a racial issue. I ain't going there with you. You don't want me to go there. So that's mean that, that school system is in the plat that is in. Cause even when Dr. George Nelson was here, was trying to get rid of all that ism that was in there, with that, them top level people getting paid all that money. Finally got them out. Heck, they ended up having some of them back. So how you helping your system, man? Next thing you know, you steady closing schools. Look where we at now. Bass of High, Delta, Beatman, Morehouse Elementary, which is over there at Old Morehouse. And West Side now is the Magnum School, which has been like that for a minute. And that's it. That, that, that doesn't make any sense on when you should be trying to establish yourself with the city government and the parish government to bring business into Morehouse Parish, regardless. I mean, like I say, sometimes you gotta leave your personal side out of this thing, cause it's, it's gonna always be politic. State government gonna pay you what you supposed to repay based on X amount of peoples in the school system. And how you handle it? If you start ending up being a, on the grade level that according to the state, a F school, whether it won't be long, they'll come in and take this, the school system over. Cause you're not applying yourself. And it, it, these don't look a little bit. But at the same time, them seven board members along with that superintendent that they brought in from Union Parish, gold figure. And I wanna brag on little, little boy Jesse Woodson Junior, he should've been our next superintendent behind Dr. Nelson. Or after, you know, Miss Sellers, love her to death. Me and her always had a good cordial conversation when we talk. But like I say, when people go to roughing your fellows, they don't know they hurting themselves. They not hurting you. Cause I'mma go home and pray for myself, then I'mma pray for you. Thanking God, God, I thank you didn't allow me to put my hands on that individual. Cause they was finna get, they was gonna either hurt me or I was gonna hurt them. And I'm serious about that, bro. But that thing with, that, that thing with my, my baby, OJ, and I'm the baby of my family, I know how they protecting me over there in Morehouse. And then that, that brother man, oh, Henry Cal Finswell, if he thought I was in a fight, he coming. And if first somebody go snatch his meat, boy, he, he start doing what he have to do. But you couldn't put your hands on me that I was, you just gonna have to whip me. That was just all to it.
Right. You know.
And I feel, and I feel the same way now, because what I'm saying is that tax base gonna take care of itself. Now, up there in Beatman, they built their little pellet plant off, on that rail spur, spur, just north of Beatman. And that kinda helping them get a little, little tax money, but all the taxes got to come back down through Morehouse Parish school system. Before it venture out to Beatman and Delta Jun-, uh, Elementary.
Right. Well, you know, Squeeze, we, we, we appreciate the jewels and gems and this history lesson. And you kinda helped us come and bring this thing into perspective, and we just gotta stop blaming and just start doing pretty much what you saying, uh, to the Babstronians tonight. But Squeeze, you know, before we let you go, uh, for the last minute, what do you wanna share from the heart, uh, to Scrop City, man? You know, we miss you and we love you, man. Just give your last shouts out to Scrop City and what you wanna spit from the heart.
Like I say, to each and every individual that been on this podcast, they always had a good ending conversation. But you can't depend on, as you say, your wall of fame. We can tell each individual in Morehouse Parish what they need to do. But until we, as the man say, we reach eighteen, register to vote, to vote. No doubt to have a blase conversation with somebody without getting intimidated or wanna put their hands on them. Our young folks, you run around here picking up the wrong instrument, pick up your book. And lay that, lay that other foolishness down. I, I, a lot of that's going on, a lot of them babies, I may not know them personally, but I, I probably know their, their parent. And, and some form of fashion, the parents are intermingling with me, they know my character. I might be a hot head just like everybody else, but certain time of the day, I step back. Man, I ain't gotta put my hands on you, but if you come put your hands on me, somebody got a problem. But I pray you don't. So we don't have to, all the way to the city government. You got to learn how to use the resources that you already have. That go to the parish government, city government, to the school system. Each three are functioning there in Morehouse Parish, Bassam, the parish seat. There is no way with the individuals that we have in Morehouse Parish, especially the city of Bassam, that look like us, the percentage wise. And we still doing, as my sister would say, one degree of stupidity, stuck on stupid. Now, if that apply to you, that apply to me also. But if that don't apply to you, as you would say, Maza Riley, I'm not talking to you. So we all need to do better. But they gotta found a better perspective, all the way around, law enforcement. How peoples, uh, interact with one another, you got to be proactive. Like I say, I didn't just act on what my, how they was doing my son, I got proactive, cause I put it back on who it was on. Yeah, the school system is part of it, but don't create a, we've been oppressed peoples already for four hundred years. But I'm not gonna be oppressed, suppressed, and danger ain't going into no depression where I'mma have to kill myself or somebody else. You won't have to do that. God give you a, a spirit in you to make you think right and wrong, you already know, but you just gonna get hostile. Well, he done me like that, walk away from him. Used to dealing with him all day, every day, know his character, time to leave him alone, cause he, he gonna get you locked up or killed. And if you blessed to get away, you ought to thank God, well, I got a second chance. But our young folks, I remember when, you probably weren't involved in it, but I know most of them, when they hit eighteen at the high school, they was registered, the council was regis- registering those individual to vote. You know, the school system can do better than what they doing, but we don't need to be going outside to get a superintendent anymore. Cause like I say, I, I listen to the gentleman from West Cal. How they, how they talk about, they raised everybody from babies all the way up into the school system. And, and how can you, just like with my grand boy, you gonna put him out talking about his phone? Well, he one of our own students over there. How you gonna send him to a suspension for what? Something you created. And then you have a committee that's supposed to have parents on there. You can't be, you don't think Robert Finswell coming on a committee ain't gonna be a yes person. I'mma do my due diligence, learn what committee I'm coming on. Just like I told the gentleman when he asked me, would I be the spokesperson for stock prep? Would I be the union person? I asked him plainly, do you actually know who you involving? You sure you wanna give me this job? Yeah, they went to laughing. Yeah, you the one for them. I said, okay. I said, now, you know I told two things, right? He said, what's that? I told this union contract book, and I talked the whole of the word. Now, I don't mean I do it always right all the time, but, uh, if one don't get to the other one where you. And he told me, he said, well, you the man for the job, cause that's who we need to be talking to, our peoples up here in this, this main office. And anything that can happen, brother Lee, I'mma say this. People need to remember Murphy's Law. What will happen, gonna happen. You just need to be prepared for it. And that's when Cardi G Woodson made this statement, education, that's to help you to think. It wasn't that them European was pushing, trying to not have us educated. We was already educated. They just didn't want us to get entwined into critical thinking. I can remember a lot of the old teachers back in the day, well, who told you to think? Well, you know, we wasn't trying to be disrespectful, but every now and then it slip out. Well, I'm able to think for myself. They'll get mad, wanna whip us. But you, I'm going home, tell mama and daddy what you did. You asked me a question, I answered it for you. So yeah, the rationale, once again, all three governments there in Morehouse Parish, they got the resources. Especially the school system, and they need to be checking down on what they doing. If you still top-heavy in Morehouse Parish school system, those people that's not being affected in your system, it's time to get rid of them. And if you need to start with the superintendent, hey, have at it. If you need to start with that student affair director, transportation director, hey, like I say, I'm sixty-seven. Time for a lot of them to go to help, bro. And that ain't nothing personal. I'm just speaking the truth. Don't like it, give me a call. Like, yeah, like I say, I don't mind having, I'm too far away for you to even touch me. But I'm close enough to let God take you in me.
Right.
That's the bottom line. But you young peoples, y'all sitting in that, that, that corridor, man. Generation X, whatever they wanna call y'all. See, I, I, you can flip that thing. You doing a good job, but it's gonna take them other ones that got them, as they say, mediocre jobs. You working, you taking care of your family, that's all you need. But learn how to stand up and talk to people in a genuine, calm manner. And all else failed, I used to do this, when I was on the board and before I got on it, and when I had to go present a message about that young man's hair. I would stand in the mirror and practice. Cause practice made perfect. And, and if you can do that, that God didn't give us the fear, the spirit of fear. He gave us what? The spirit of power, love, and a sound mind. You keep a sound mind, they, they, they can't control you. Cause they don't know how. I can't make them mad. Yeah, you made me mad, but I kept it to myself. And I found out you being inefficient and ineffective. And can't take care of your business, cause you too busy worrying about what I'm saying and doing. I read policy well, bro. And that's where our peoples fail at, when they go to these meetings with these teachers. They supposed to be helping you, not you buying down, they telling you something you need to do to your kid. Oh, that didn't work. Gotta do better. Then one lady told me, oh, Mr. Finswell, I know you be glad when OJ, uh, graduate. Don't matter about him. He got cousins back down here. I still gotta help folks as long as I'm here.
Right.
And, and I say this before you close, just like I left in twenty fifteen, I still get calls. Maybe not every week, but people are calling and asking me questions. Just like I told my son about that issue with his, with his son, about that phone, son, go get on the school board agenda. And let them know who you are. Your last name stands for something. Whether it's Edmonds or Finswell. Just, just go to run your pedigree down to them, who you belong to. And, and, and we didn't talk about, I, I did a little time down and see how. we didn't talk about, I I did a little time down in Seattle, Vista, when I was at school system, now they love me. I pretty much worked every job besides being a teacher.
Right.
They love me being a parent. But I just didn't feel comfortable being stuck in one, you know, one building, one person or two people. They had, their school system was just like I was at the time, they had six elementaries, one junior high, junior high outside the city and one high school. The city government was same as I was, our government. The home base didn't do anything for the city. But they was maintaining.
Right. Well, Squeeze, we appreciate you, man, for stopping through. Um, we really enjoyed you, man, and I just wanted to end season one, uh, with one of my mentors and kinda hear from the hip of, uh, what really goes on and scroll Scribe City. And I know you, I know you proud of Scribe City and I know you forever Scribe City, and man, we wanna wish you the best on all your endeavors. Uh, we just a phone call away, bro, and we hope we can get a chance to see you real soon, man.
Yes, sir, show, and so do I, but like I say, I stay in contact with somebody only, like I say, once a week. I ain't ain't calling no names or position. But many I talked to, some I just pick up the phone and call them, they say, man, I was just thinking about you. Well, that's when I call you, cause we just needed laughing. Some also go to crying and then we go to laughing again, but we just look down and say, what happened to our city?
Right.
And 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 it ain't what happened, it's who you forgot. You forgot your first love. Man, when you lead Almighty, you headed for total destruction, as one of my old angels would say. And that's coming. And that's what's wrong with Bass of, they missing the whole the generation, the generation that started growing up and you are letting peoples apply, uh, a rule and policy, and you don't question them, cause it's a forty-three vote. Man, that don't even apply nowhere. Yeah, it's gonna be a hard number, but we need to have some kind of unison. Even Jose four and six said, my people's parish, for lack of knowledge. So you can't continue to sit there with a voting population in 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 a certain district and we couldn't get brother older C Hill in that that seat? Man, I got a problem with that.
Exactly.
So Morehouse Parish, especially the city of Bass, hey, it's time you awake. Anytime they awake, you already woke. But you you parents and everybody passed the age of eighteen, let's get it together. Unify.
Right. And we love you, Squeeze, man, and we gonna get out of here, bro. And we wish you the best on all your endeavors. And man, hope we'll get back with you real soon. I'm your host, Maza Roddy. We wanna thank Brother Finswell for coming through. We wanna thank y'all and we ending season one, we'll be back with you guys again, December the seventh. Stay in tune with Instagram, Facebook and Twitter and YouTube for previous and upcoming content. Until next time, this is being brought to you by Involved Social Civic Club, where we understand the social civic needs of love, learn, live and laugh. Y'all stay involved, y'all stay encouraged. And most of all, y'all stay immersed. We out of this thing.